Hello, everybody, and welcome to the November 19th, 2020 Arts and Culture Commission Meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioners Yank?
Here.
Vayar?
Here.
Vidor?
Here.
Vice Chair Tufankian?
Here.
Chairperson Zadorian?
Here.
Report of recorder regarding post in the agenda. The agenda for the November 19th, 2020 Regular Meeting was posted on November 16th, 2020 on the bulletin board outside of City Hall. Agenda item two, consent items A, approval of the regular meeting minutes for October 15th, 2020.
I have one amendment, and that is to say that Linda Ravenswood, who spoke about poet laureate, asked about the city spearheading a poet laureate program.
Thank you, Commissioner Vidor. We will make sure to note that and amend the minutes.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes as amended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
That was Commissioner Tufankian, or Vice Chair Tufankian.
Roll call, Commissioners Yank?
Yes.
Vayar?
Yes.
Vidor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tufankian?
Yes.
Chairperson Zadorian?
Yes.
Agenda item two B, approval of the special meeting minutes from November 13th, 2020.
There are no changes?
This is Jane.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I move, we accept the minutes of the November 13th, 2020 Special Meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I second.
Thank you. Roll call, Commissioners Yank?
Yes.
Vayar?
Yes.
Vidor?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tufankian?
Yes.
Chairperson Zadorian?
Yes.
Agenda item three, introductions and presentations. A, libraries and culture presented by Jennifer Fuku Tomi, Arts and Culture Administrator. So I will pull this up. I'm gonna sure. Yes, thank you. Oh, I have to do that first. Thank you. Okay. So. We have, first up, 15,000 and more is one of our Art Happens Anywhere projects by artist Connie DK Lane, which is a memorial tribute to the lives lost from the coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic in California. The concept is based upon Chinese ancestral worship of deceased relatives and family members with a special ceremony. This ceremony requires burning of mixture of gold and silver joss papers, ghost money, as an offering to the deceased. A mixture of silver and gold ingots differentiates the deaths of males and females from the coronavirus. We invite and encourage the community to participate in this project to help make the hanging ingots by picking up an ingot-making kit at Brand Library or Central Library this week. For more information, please click on the link on the screen. I Am a Spal Business Glendale is another one of our Art Happens Anywhere projects by artist Eric Axine. This is an immersive virtual experience that can be viewed by any connected device. The project involves portraits of Glendale business owners taken in their shops and ambient sounds covered in and around the shop. The photos combine up to 1,000 high-res digital captures and are so highly detailed that the viewer can actually see all the items in the store. The online experience features a zoom-in function that allows the viewer to wander and explore around the image at 100% magnification. For more information, please visit the link on the screen. Dr. Shushan Karpetian, Deputy Director of the University of Southern California Institute of Armenian Studies, will discuss the past and present of Artsakh conflict with GLAC Director Dr. Gary Schaefer in this virtual event entitled Introduction to the Conflict in Artsakh, tonight at 6:30 PM. For many, this conflict has been uniquely challenging to understand and follow, given the complex history between Artsakh, known as Nagorno-Karabakh, Armenia, Azerbaijan, and Turkey. This event will be an opportunity for community members to better understand the historical context of the present-day fight in Artsakh, the competing narratives of the conflict, and credible news resources, and impact of the Armenian diaspora locally. For more information, please visit the link on the screen. We continue with the Be the Change series, featuring a number of Native American artists and activist influencers, plus online exhibits and programming. Author David Heskel Wambli Wyden, an enrolled member of the Chicago Lakota Nation and winner of the 2020 SPUR Award from the Western Writers of America, will discuss his new mystery novel, Winter Counts, in conversation with author Marcy R. Rendin. Winter Counts is a native thriller that examines the broken criminal justice system on reservations and the mediation of native meditation on many Native identity. Marcy Rendin is an award-winning author with an extensive body of fiction and nonfiction works, as well as fresh new murder mystery series. Register this virtual event. For more information, please click on the link on the screen. In celebration with Native American Heritage Month, Reflects Space Gallery is proud to present Nowhere and Everywhere Indigenous in America, an exhibit that investigates the myriad ways in which Native Americans are represented and misrepresented throughout popular cultural imagery, while creating and counterpointed imagery through humanistic photography and contemporary art by two Native artists, Navajo artist and filmmaker Pamela J. Peters and Kiowa photographer Horus Pula. The exhibit also examines the insidious spaces and imagery of California Mission System and the infamous Ramona plays. For more information, please click on the link on the screen. And in the Teen Glendale Empowerment Now, Jen Talks is a video talk show that focuses on empowering youth in Glendale. It is a teen-centered podcast, video podcast, on sharing teens' voices and addressing teens' interests and issues. November's talks will consist of interviews with Native American artists, activists, and influencers such as Kalina Lawrence, Felicia Nez, and Jennifer Long. The Teen Services Department has also launched the Teen Graphic Novel Club, and this month's featured novel is Trickster. All cultures have tales of the trickster, a crafty creature or being who uses cunning to get food, steal precious possessions, or simply cause mischief. In Trickster, 24 Native storytellers were paired with 24 comic artists, telling cultural tales from America. Ranging from serious to dramatic to funny and sometimes downright fiendish, these tales of tricksters bring back popular culture to the first graphic anthology of Native American trickster tales. For more information, please visit the link on the screen. And that is what we have for the library report.
Beautiful. Okay, we can move forward to the next item.
Next item, Oral Communications. We do have one caller, Nina Crowe from Glendale Arts. We're gonna connect. Hi, Nina, you are on the air.
Hello, and thank you, and good afternoon. I, as the Managing Director of Glendale Arts, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for our recent grant award to Glendale Arts through the Support the Arts Grant Program. And the funding that you awarded us will help operations as related to the Alex Theater, as well as our ability to remain relevant and define our possibilities for the future. So thank you so much. And of course, speaking of possibilities, I did want to mention two items that I hope that you will participate in. And the first is our December 1 Giving Tuesday Comedy Laugh It Off Night, and it's going to be livestreamed from the Alex Theater, and it kicks off our traditional giving season, which is very untraditional this year. But it is available to view with a donation, and information on that is available at alextheater.org. And then on December 7, the Alex Theater's wishing wall will be up for hopes and dreams to be hung on the Alex Theater gate. So it was inspired by Yoko Ono's Wish Tree, and what we're actually doing is building a monument of hope at the end of this truly transformative year. And the wishing wall will remain in place through the first week in January, and then serve as a reminder that we are much stronger together. And information on that is available at the alextheater.org and glendalearts.org website. And again, thank you for the recent grant award, and if you have any questions, visit the website, or certainly email or call me for more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for taking the time to call in. It was very nice to hear from you, and I'm very glad that it all worked out with the grant.
That is all that we have for Oral Communications.
Okay, we can go ahead and move forward.
Okay, Agenda item five, action items. There are no action items. Agenda item six, discussion items. A, 2019-20 Work Plan Progress Updates. The current update that we have is on November 13th, 2020, the Artist Review and Selection Committee met to review the Black History Month Call for Artists. There were 16 applications total, and two applications rose to the top. The first application was from Black in Glendale. They proposed Community Healing Circles, which would take place in the month of February, that will feature five teaching artists. So there will be a total of 20 workshops throughout the month of February, which is very exciting. And the second application was from an artist named Kevin Robertson, and he will be presenting a literary spoken word protest performance piece, which is called Death Sentence. So basically, there are five to six spoken word pieces that he'll be producing, that'll be prerecorded and kind of spliced into one large piece, and he will be presenting those online.
That's incredible. My question is, so was that because of budgetary? That it was those two specifically chosen from the 16? How were they chosen?
I welcome Commissioner Yank and Commissioner Vayar to chime in regarding the process, but those, out of the 16, those were the two applications that rose to the top.
Okay. Yeah, if the Commissioners, did you guys want to make any comments about specific ones that you chose? And, you know, kind of tell us more about your decision-making process.
Yes. So staff had done a good job of going through the applications and highlighting the ones that had some artistic merit. I have to... The actions were quite disappointing.
Sue, you got cut off. We're not really hearing you. You're kind of going in and out. I'm so sorry.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, so, yeah, basically, most of the applications were quite disappointing. And so we chose merit, and they also had a broad range of medium that they were working within. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I do think it's worth some thought about these monthly, these applications and the outreach that we're conducting around them, because the pool of applicants was, I would say, not of a very good quality.
That's typically kind of what happens with our open applications. Sometimes when we do do it on, what was it?
Cafe?
On cafe, we get a lot more, you know, artistic applications, while when we just do an open call, we get lots of different ones that sometimes don't meet the standards that we're looking for. So I'm glad that you guys did kind of come down to the two that you do think fit into that. I'm happy to hear that. If Jane, you had anything you want to add, or if any of the other Commissioners had any questions about how these were chosen.
This is Jane. No, actually, Commissioner Yank covered it all very well. Thanks.
Are you taking people in a specific order, Savannah, or?
Sorry, yeah, we can go ahead and do that. Let's start with Vice Chair Tufankian. Did you have any comments?
Questions. I just wanted to see, for the first one, you said there's going to be teaching opportunities. Is that what it was?
Yes, that's correct.
So is that going to be on Zoom? Is it one person who is going to be teaching, and is it going to be for school? What age group? Or is it for adults, or?
The, that's a fantastic question. Thank you. The workshops are going to be led by five distinct teaching artists, and they're all going to be online via Zoom to anyone open to the public. There are two particular workshops that have a cap. I believe it's yoga and possibly storytelling that might have a specific cap of 20 to 25 participants, but it's not geared to any specific age range.
Oh, I don't know why I thought there was going to be art-related.
There are several that are, so I'm sorry, I just mentioned those two. The other ones are a dance workshop, there's a movement workshop, and I forget the fifth, I apologize, but they're all based around healing and movement in that aspect.
Okay. Thank you.
Storytelling, my apologies, storytelling.
Okay. Jane, did you have any other comments on this?
No, thanks.
Okay. Arlene, would you want to add anything?
Yeah, just to reconfirm, I think, what Caroline Tufankian asked. There is no actual onsite visual art component of either of these selections. Do I understand that?
Onsite, do you mean public, like a live performance?
Visible from the public right-of-way. Visual arts visible from the public right-of-way.
Understand. Yes, thank you. No, we did not, neither of these two top proposals had any visual public art from the right-of-way.
And I was under the impression that we did, in fact, in fact, I remember discussing it at one of the meetings, that we did go to cafe.
We did. We did. We did. It was released on cafe.
And it was a regional call or a local? How local was the call? What was the breadth of it?
It was all of Southern California.
Wow, okay. Well, that's very disappointing. And I'm also extremely disappointed that we aren't, you know, we seem to be, and I don't know if it's the amount of money we're offering, or the amount of outreach we're doing, or the quality of our outreach, but obviously, I think we're not getting the kind of extremely bold, powerful visual arts offerings that we were hoping for, you know. The city's, cityscape is, you know, and I'd love to hear what my fellow Commissioners have to say, but to me, the kind of, you know, I don't want to use a harsh word, because we have a beautiful city here, but we're not adding color, vibrancy, and artistic merit to our public streetscape and landscape, so to speak. And I wonder how, in the coming work plan year, we can remedy that situation. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I just want to thank Commissioners Yank and Vayar for doing such a good, you know, careful, thoughtful job of making the selection. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Vidor, for your comments. Oh, just to quickly comment on your comments. I do want to share that staff did extensive research to reach out to the Black community and Black artists. I reached out to several artists, other staff members reached out to several artists. I think what might have not, might not have been shared by Commissioner Yank, because she was cut off with her internet access, was that some of the feedback that I have gotten from Black artists was that it felt that the call was a little bit of pandering to the community and only reaching out to the community when we need them, per se. Not to say that we're doing that, but it appears as such. So in the long term, absolutely, we want to do more in-depth, authentic, genuine outreach to any community, but I do want to say that staff did do extensive outreach, but the feedback was that some artists chose not to apply.
Okay, thank you. That's very excellent feedback to hear, and definitely worth having extensive discussions about it.
May I make a comment about that?
Yes.
And I know that we've already, you know, planned it out, but I think it would be very beneficial to all if we actually didn't categorize them as, you know, Black artists or Armenian artists or Hispanic artists, or, you know, if there is this commonality and this bridge that we kind of are opening it up to everyone. So if there's a way to do that at some point, I think that would be beneficial.
I agree. Mr. Schaefer?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, I would just like to actually echo what Commissioner Tufankian said. I think it actually would be cafes expensive to advertise on. If we were to kind of put these all together as one, it would give more time, we'd get more people, and just say that we are looking for, you know, culturally relevant works that speak to the times that we're in right now, that they could be applied across all kinds of racial, ethnic, cultural boundaries. So I think the Commission should consider that as we move forward. And then we did, you know, we consciously chose, as a group, to delay this call for artists. So it was also, could not be advertised for as long as I think Jennifer would have liked it to have. And then I would like to commend her, because no matter how many artists supplied or the, you know, how things came through, she still put the work and the effort into, you know, doing a regional call, and I appreciate the work she did. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Commissioner Yank?
Yes, I would really love to have a discussion about how we frame these calls, and I think to Commissioner Vidor's comment, the goal of having, you know, a very impactful visual arts. I mean, if we can put some of these things into words, I think that might help appeal to some specific artists, you know, and appeal to the kind of projects that we would like to see. So taking a look at how we frame the calls, but also the application, too, because there were a number of questions, even looking through some of the higher-rated projects that the artists had not answered, you know, or they hadn't really considered the site, you know, the basic kind of things like that, that I think we could take a look at and see what are some of the questions we might ask applicants to address in these kinds of things.
Thank you. I definitely agree with all of you. I know that there were discussions in the past meetings.
And all came through.
I'm sorry I missed that, but I know there were conversations in the past about how to go about these applications. I think we all agree that you can't just take a cookie-cutter approach to these types of things, and that we should be putting more time into how we frame these applications and the types of artists that we're reaching out to and the outreach that we are doing. I definitely applaud Jennifer for all her work. I know how much she put into this and the outreach that she did do. I think this is a lesson for us, and it is her first time, so we're learning as we go. Should we have done probably better? Yes. Are we learning from our mistakes? Yes. So I think that we should move forward with those two applications. I'm very happy that you guys chose them. Definitely for the next round next year, we will reframe, reword, whatever it takes, so that this is not taken the incorrect way and that we are not perceived as pandering. So I think we're all on the same page here. We agree, and I just look forward to at least those two applications for now. If there are no further comments, we can go ahead and move forward to the next discussion.
I would just like to make one further comment, and that's that, you know, times are changing the world, and especially, you know, us here in the States are going through a lot of growing pains and trying to see the world through a broader lens and, you know, get on top of our own prejudices or viewpoints, some of which we don't even realize we have. And I think it might be worthwhile at some point for us, you know, either as a group or as individuals, to seek some conversation with some folks who may be able to help us look at our viewpoint, look at our own viewpoints and, you know, because, yeah, sure, we're new at this and we're tripping on certain things, and it's understandable, but, you know, I think if we can also have some conversations with some folks who are maybe more intensely involved in social justice issues and how the arts and the curation of art might be perceived, that might help us. I don't know what that looks like exactly, but I think it's something we should consider.
Agreed. Thank you. Okay. If there are no further comments, we can go ahead and move forward.
Further updates for the city work plan progress. So we'll move on to discussion item B, 2021 Six-Month Work Plan, January to June 2021, fiscal year 2020-21. I'm gonna pull up a presentation. Okay. Apologies. Okay. So as I believe the Commission requested that the last Commission meeting, staff did a, is going to present a recap on the 2019-2021 Work Plan Progress. This is a visual of the budget allocation and expenditures for 2019, the calendar year 2019, and calendar year 2020. So throughout the presentation, you'll see blue is highlighted as the 2019 budget allocation and estimated expenditures, and in red-orange, calendar year 2020 budget allocation and estimated expenditures. So from the top here, we'll talk about the budget allocation for 2019 was $216,000,000. Calendar year 2020 was $546,000,000. So the total overall work plan budget was a total of $806,000,000. For calendar year 2019, estimated expenditures were approximately $101,973.38. And for calendar year 2020, estimated expenditures are approximately $295,000,000. So there's an estimated total expenditure for the entire work plan of $396,000,973.38. So remaining that is left over in the 2021, 2020-2021 budget is approximately $251,000,000. So we're gonna go through the first year as a reflection. So calendar year 2019, January to December 2019, approximately, we spent $101,973.38. This is a pie chart that shows the dispersal of how the money was spent. Blue is citywide arts at 30%, red is performing arts at 30%, neighborhood arts is 16, it's at, green at 16%, and arts and cultural events is at 24% at the purple. So I'm just gonna do a quick overview of how we spent the money in 2019 from these four buckets. First up is citywide arts. So this was mainly the Beyond the Box program from 2019. You see some of the artists in boxes that we produced in 2019. Next is neighborhood arts. So this was primarily Scott Froshauer's art, the signs throughout the city, Adams Square Mini Part Gas Station, and the Glendale Beautiful Poster Contest. Performing arts, last year, we did the Brand Library Plaza Series and the 222 East Concert Series. And arts and cultural events were sponsorship of events such as the Open Arts and Music Festival, and Glendale Tech Week, and the Dia de los Muertos Public Art Installation. Moving on to year two, the budget for year two calendar year January to December 2020 was $546,000,000. The estimated expenditure is approximately $295,000,000. And as you can see, the pie chart changed quite a bit. Thanks to COVID-19, there was an expansion of citywide arts in order to pivot and respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. So blue citywide arts is 76%. Red, no, there was no performing arts this year, unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Neighborhood arts in green is about 2%, and arts and cultural events is 22% in purple. So to give a highlight of what this encompasses, the citywide arts that we produced this year were Beyond the Box mural program, and the Art Happens Anywhere program, as you all know, was a huge chunk of the 76% of how the budget was spent. Neighborhood arts, we continued to support the exhibitions at the Adams Square Mini Part Gas Station. Arts and cultural events was the Be the Change series, and also the, you know, Black History Month Call for Artists that we did. And I'm actually gonna stop there, because the second part moves on to part two. So are there any questions or comments regarding the work plan progress summary? And let's get started down the line. Vice Chair Tufankian, did you have any comments so far?
No, no comments.
Okay. Commissioner Vayar?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Vidor?
Thanks very much, Jennifer. It's a really comprehensive summary of what happened over the last couple of years, and I'll look forward to also talking in, for the future planning about what we're gonna do, or how we're gonna re-channel the extra money that we saved that was left over.
Thank you. Commissioner Yank?
I think you're on mute.
No comment.
Okay, thank you. We can go ahead and move forward. I don't have any comments either.
No comments.
Okay. Thank you. So then I'm gonna move on to part two, which is the Six-Month Work Plan, January to June 2021. And this is on your screen as well. So as I mentioned at the beginning, for fiscal year 2021, we have an estimated $251,000,000 that are remaining in this, this part of the budget. So on the screen is how staff is proposing to disburse the remaining funds within the next six months. So with citywide arts, these are our culturally specific calls for artists, including Armenian Genocide Remembrance Month, the BLM Anniversary Juneteenth, and LGBTIQ Plus Celebration Month. And then we also have our art consultant that we're gonna be beginning to work with, Labas Projects. Within neighborhood arts, the Adams Square Mini Part Gas Station, we will continue to support exhibits throughout this six-month period. Performing arts, you know, hopefully, with the COVID-19 pandemic, we can begin to produce the Brand Library Plaza Series again, and this is And this is based on artist fees and production fees. And arts and cultural events, again, based on COVID-19, we are hoping to have a Glendale Art Walk. So that is how staff is proposing to utilize the remaining budget that we have.
Okay. We can go back down that line again. So this is the entire second portion, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Vice Chair Tufan Kean, did you have any comments or questions?
So in citywide, I think, did we have something allocated for Armenian Genocide Remembrance Month and BLM and LGBTQ? Do we have something for all of them? So this 20,000 would be in addition?
This would come out of the, the current work plan, which says we would support temporary public art. That was kind of the bucket that encompasses the Art Happens Anywhere program.
Right.
And we wanted to make sure that we allocated funds for those three specifically culturally, specific calls for artists.
Right. No, I thought that we already had something allocated for them. So this, this 251,000 is what's left over from this year. So we're going to add to the previous budget?
No, we, you are, you are correct that we, we agreed to allocate it, but it has not been an official expenditure as of yet. So these are based on estimated expenditures that would happen during this timeframe of January to June.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Vice Chair, sorry, Commissioner Vire?
No, it looks good to me. It looks like a sensible distribution of, of the funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Vidor?
Okay, so, so this money is the, I guess you could call it windfall money that we got from not spending our entire allocation for the previous work plan two year period. But we have not yet. And do I understand that correctly?
This is specifically based on the calendar year 2020 budget, which includes fiscal year 2019, 2020 and fiscal year 2020, 2021. It's a little confusing.
All right. So this is part of our current. So what I see on the screen now is part of our current work plan that, that we're operating under, where the next one?
This is under the current. So.
Okay. Okay. So we're still talking about current work plan and what to, what we're going to do with this money that we saved because of the pandemic.
Correct. Correct.
All right. So we haven't gotten to the new work plan yet?
No.
Okay. Yeah, it looks good. I mean, it, in some ways, it kind of, once again, speaks to the whole issue of how we frame and describe calls that are specific to certain cohorts of, based on race and ethnicity. So I guess, you know, maybe we still have some work to do on that. But I think the events that you're planning around are, seem appropriate. And, you know, the, the art walk is based on the, is that a Labas? You're, you're considering that Labas, the art walk?
No, that is something separate. The art walk was supposed to happen in 2020, but due to COVID-19, it did not happen. So we would like to reserve some funding in 2021 with the hope that it will happen.
All right. So there's nothing on this page here that we're looking at that relates to work that Labas will be doing with us?
It is considered, oh, Director Schaefer, would you like to share?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Vidor. So the Labas, his, his fee is reflected, what we estimate will be part of the fee under citywide arts. But it does not reflect any art installation that he will be recommending to us. Because we don't know yet and likely that won't happen in the first six months of next calendar year. But I would like to, like the commission, perhaps, it's up to the commission to consider the Armenian Genocide Remembrance Month, the BLM Anniversary Juneteenth and LGBTQ plus as maybe a bucket of funds. And maybe the commission, we can come back to commission with a recommendation of doing something more broadly as we had spoken about earlier. One call, you know, but that covers all of it. If commission would be open to that. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay. Well, well, I would, but I'm, I'm still making my comments. So you can count my vote.
My apologies. Just wanted to clarify.
No, no, that's, that's okay. Thank you. That did clarify for me because I thought maybe some of these activities were meant to go under Labas, which I didn't think they were. So that's, that cleared that up. I assume that we're going to be holding a retreat at some time fairly soon to work through our next work plan. And I wonder also if Labas is in fact now, has it cleared all the review channels it needs to clear in the city so that we can get to them and sign the contract and move ahead as soon as possible? I think it had to go to city council and I don't know what else. And I just wondered where that's at.
Sure. That, that is a fantastic comment, Commissioner Vidor, and I appreciate it. The, honestly, the holdup is me. As one person, I'm also managing the Support the Arts Grant. I'm, I'm the filter right now that's holding up everything. So I'm the, I've been managing the Supports the Arts Grant to try and get those grants out as soon as possible. So I am honestly, as soon as I get back, going to work on the contract so that Mr. Grant and Director Schaefer can review it for signature, can review the draft. And then ideally, we would like to send it to Labas as soon as possible for the review and the signature. Director Schaefer?
But to, to clarify, Commissioner Vidor, city council has approved the Labas expenditure. It's just now we have to get the contract through and approve. And we, Jennifer is going to, I think, be speaking later. She is planning on the retreat and I would like to see Labas be a part of that.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, both of you.
Thank you. Commissioner Yank?
I just wanted to offer my agreement with Director Schaefer's comments about making a bucket with all of the citywide arts and having staff think about framing those. So that's it.
So I, I guess this is a discussion item so we're allowed to have back and forth. I'm just a little confused as to how that would work, considering that we would be having Juneteenth in June, we would be having the Armenian Genocide Remembrance most likely in April. If that was a bucket with the funds, you're basically just saying that we just put all the money in and somehow if one of these citywide arts only gets 10,000, then we can use the rest of that for another item. I mean, what is, what difference would it make putting in one bucket rather than multiple buckets? If we did ever need to add additional funds, we could always do that down the line. But I just want to know what the difference would be. What, what is the advantage of this?
All right. Director Schaefer again. And, and I would love to actually hear from Commissioner Yank on this too. The, the advantage would be, you know, one call, a well-thought-out application process that speaks to any kind of cultural situation. And then yes, it likely would be, it might be most appropriate to place something for LGBTQ, you know, in the month of June, as that is Gay Pride Month. It might be appropriate to, you know, place something having to do with Armenian Genocide Remembrance Month in April, because that is when the month occurs. But we may also get something that speaks to, you know, Filipino heritage, Korean heritage, and that could be placed, you know, where appropriate as well. So I, I just, I think it moves away from any, because none of us are trying to pander. There's no tokenism going on. But we just want to celebrate the cultural heritage, you know, of, of America, quite frankly, and Glendale. And, and bring that here and bring those artists here. So I see the advantage of one call. Very thoughtful. And, and then we, you know, place the pieces where it makes most sense to place them. And if something makes sense to do in April, even though it has to do with, you know, it's an African-American artist, that's, that's okay too. We work in consort with the artist. That's my initial thoughts, but I'd love to hear from others.
I just don't agree on having one application process because we just, I, I, from what I'm picking up, what we discussed was that we need to be much more careful with the wording, the phrasing, how we're kind of creating these applications and calls. And to just do one for all of these is, it actually undermines what we're trying to do, in my opinion. But I would love to hear back from all the other commissioners as well. I mean, I could always go down in order, but for this specifically, if there's anybody who wants to say something, go ahead. Are there any other opinions on this matter? Do we want to put it all in one bucket or not? I, I never agree with putting everything in one bucket because every community and has a different perspective and a different way of outreach and communicating what we're looking for. And so to put it all as one kind of defeats that. If you agree with me, please go ahead. If you disagree with me, I would love to hear your take on this.
Well, I think that's a good point. Oh, trying to talk at once.
No, go ahead, Commissioner Yank. We can hear you.
Okay. I think we, I, to me, I think it would be important to be artist-led in this process. And so my feeling is that if this is framed as having a value around cultural diversity, and it's possible that we could even point to some of these benchmarks, you know, that are being celebrated in the city of Glendale in other ways. But, you know, seeing what we get back and then having these signature projects, I think then I would be, that's when I would reach out to the communities to make sure that they know about these, you know, these projects. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I just, I, I just feel like that could all be described in a call. But it wouldn't be limiting to the artists. And then we would be able to be led by the artists, you know, and they might come up with things that we would never even have thought of, you know, that could bring multiple communities together. So that's just, that's just my feeling on it.
I definitely think that we should find a way to bring all of these communities and cultures together. I just don't know if that's the proper way of doing it, only because we already have a specific call out to the Hispanic community, which is for the Dia de los Muertos event. So to, are we going to also mix up Dia de los Muertos with all these other events? I mean, where does, where do we kind of, I guess, set boundaries as to what we're willing and not willing to mix together? And of course, obviously, we have Dia de los Muertos, but it's supported by multiple communities and cultures. It's not just for the one, you know, lots of people come out. I mean, this year was beautiful. They had an entire altar dedicated just to Artsakh and the victims. And so that was definitely multicultural. And so I think there's different ways of doing it rather than just meshing everything into one, which I think is actually, it kind of desensitizes, but it takes away from what we're trying to do. So definitely, I think we should work on.
I guess I would respond.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'm sorry?
I just wanted to respond because the, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to respond because I think that Dia de los Muertos is a very specific format. And these are being led by kind of, you know, ethnic or heritage events that don't necessarily have a specific artistic format attached to them. And so I think that's why we sometimes see things a little bit more all over the place in terms of the application. So I would be interested in thinking about maybe pairing with these, thinking about our values around format, around medium, things like that. So I think there's just other things to consider other than the specific cultural group that we're trying to relate to.
I agree. So maybe what we can do moving forward is kind of think of specific events to tailor to those communities. So how we have Dia de los Muertos, we can create kind of LGBTQIA+ would be for Gay Pride Month. I mean, we're going to be having a gay pride in Glendale. And obviously, we'd be working in collaboration with them and hosting some sort of either art installation or something for the event. And so we can maybe work in, in that medium and create events around these things rather than just a plain call for artists. And we get kind of different types of things that we're not really looking for. Maybe it needs to be more focused and honed into what we really want out of these. Sorry, Commissioner Vidor, I know you wanted to say something.
Oh, yeah. Well, it was changing as I listened to Commissioner Yank and you talk about this. But it seems like it would, it might be a good idea. And I know we haven't done this. I've, I've been involved in it in other domains of the city. And I think it would serve us well now to commission some type of a study session. This is where you have the commission working together and maybe it's an official meeting, but you have other individuals and stakeholders. And I think Commissioner Yank mentioned artists particularly, but also people who are, you know, very well versed in, involved in social justice issues, inclusivity, diversity matters, you know, like there's a coalition for an anti-racist Glendale group that gets together and has a lot of very engaged people. There are a number of artists who are, you know, from different communities within Glendale and the region who might be helpful. And we need to expand our range of, we, we need to expand our discussion to include other people because, you know, we're five viewpoints here and they're all good viewpoints. But it would be nice to get other people involved. So what do you think about that? Having some kind of a study session?
I agree completely. I think that's very necessary.
I, I also agree. I think that's a very good idea. And I think we're talking about a few different things here also. I mean, one of them is more celebrating tradition and culture. And the other one is really addressing social issues, social injustices. And, you know, so maybe those are the, the programs or events where we do want to bridge the different cultures and so on. Or maybe when we're celebrating Dia de los Muertos, you know, it's more specific or to, to that culture.
Yeah. I mean, what, what Commissioner Yank said is very true that we have, you know, some communities who have a very defined process for celebrating their culture and also expressing their culture through the arts. And then there are others that aren't. And then there are other communities. Obviously, the black community spoke up and brought, brought up the issue of pandering, which is a very sensitive topic. And that's something that we want to really address. And, you know, a lot of really ugly stuff has happened in the last year that probably, you know, so we, we, we really, I think, need to have a broad discussion with a number of other people included.
Agreed.
So who do we invite and how do we, how do we find the right people to invite?
So that, that is the correct question to be asking. And obviously, I don't want to be the one to like say who and what. But, you know, for a few of these, it might be a little simpler, like the LGBTQIA, there is the, wow, now I can't remember it, but it was my teacher. If anyone remembers their names, they were in charge of the Gay Pride event and they had a name for their, their organization.
Glendale.
Glendale Out. Thank you. Thank you.
We could, we, we tend, we don't have to do this. I mean, Dr. Schaefer, you can weigh in, but we don't have to do this here at the meeting. We can, there are leaders in Glendale of many different ethnic and cultural and racial communities. Be tapped.
So if I might, we're, we're kind of branching off of the discussion of the work plan. So to bring it back, why don't we leave the work plan as it is? Let staff come back with a recommendation on how to proceed with some community engagement around that. So we'll leave the money in the individualized buckets because they just conveniently are there now. And we'll come back with, with the recommendation and we'll agendize this to make it a more formalized discussion. Would be my suggestion.
That definitely works. I definitely have a, we stopped at, I think, Commissioner Vidor or Commissioner Yank, did you make your comments on the six month plan?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good on that.
Okay. I just want to make a few of my comments. So everything looks good to me so far. I did want to get some more updates by Labas, but I, as you guys said, the contract hasn't been signed. I would like, moving forward, for them to be at all of our meetings or present, calling in to give us an update, kind of like how Jennifer gives updates on the Library Arts and Culture events, kind of an update as to what they've been working on, what they want to, you know, relay to us. So that's one. Two, I'm not seeing here, but I did want this six-month plan to incorporate the mural program, seeing that the city council will have voted by then and update that we should be incorporating that in here and maybe adding some funds to that, only because we don't want to wait until after June 2021. We want to get started the second that we have that approved and the ordinance ready to go. So I want to see what my fellow commissioners think about that. And also, I know this might not be directly a part of the work plan, but going back to applications, I know that there's a certain time when applications are open. However, in those times where they're dormant throughout the year, if somebody goes on our website, I do want them to see that there are certain events and applications and when they're available and for them to maybe have a slot to fill out their information as to be interested in that call so that we can make sure that they get it. Yes, they can just subscribe to our newsletter, but this would be much more detailed. So that is one of my recommendations for that. Other than that, maybe the mural update, if I can get some insight as to can we add this on to the six-month plan?
Director Schaefer, I don't know if you want to comment, but the reason why we did not include it in this version of the work plan is because we're on a very short timeline to approve this six-month work plan. It has to be approved ideally now so that we can instate it and have it approved by the end of the year, which is why we have not. And the timing wise, the mural ordinance is going to go into effect in early December. So that is why it was not included at this point. But Director Schaefer, do you have any additional comments?
I'd just say we have two kind of murals pending right now. And so we have to start getting ready. We're trying to get the budget to align with fiscal year because that's how the city does the budget. And so we can definitely start looking, let's, I would suggest we get through those first two. We do need to do some additional work on mural, the mural, like I don't think the ordinance is completely worked through, so we need to do some work on that, which I think we should do for those over the next few months, work on the two murals we have. And then I would suggest that definitely we incorporate something and we discuss it at the quote unquote retreat and talk about how we can start incorporating those more actively in the coming, in the next fiscal year. So we literally start talking in the city about our fiscal year budgets in February. So what we're trying to do is literally have that retreat. I think Jennifer's looking, I don't want to steal her thunder, sometime in January so that we can kind of get that, our budget kind of pieced together so we can stay on track with the city's normal budget process. So that would be my suggestion.
Would it be impossible to add it on just in case and just allocate like, let's say $50,000? And if it's not used, it's not used, but it was allocated in the budget in case things do work out and by June, let's say in June of 2021, we have a mural ready to go?
What I might suggest is we take the art walk monies and put that towards mural, but I just have a feeling it's going to take a few months, a number of months, and I apologize just to work through, you know, we have to survey other cities, look what they're doing, work to build our mural ordinances as best we can so it best serves us. So it's just going to take some time, but we could, if you, if you, if you want to, so that we can have it happening before June 30, is probably take the art walk monies because I'm not so certain we can have an art walk.
In the next six months.
And then put those monies towards, you know, undefined mural, if you will, murals, probably plural. I hate to take away the brand performance because I'm really hopeful we can do that this year, even if we have to socially distance to do it. I just would hate to take those funds away. So that would be my suggestion.
Okay, so we're basically anticipating that the Glendale Art Walk and Brand Library Pluses are probably not going to happen.
I'm hopeful the brand pluses series can happen.
Okay.
But I would say the art walk is a little more iffy than that. So if I were to take monies from somewhere, I'd probably take the art walk monies and put that towards, towards the mural program. Hopefully, we can have an art walk in the later part of the year, you know, we're just delayed by a year.
I mean, it's definitely not going to happen between January and June, right? Because we were always aiming for September anyway, so we can just scrap that and add in the mural program.
Yeah.
Okay, I would recommend doing that if any, sorry.
Oh, just for clarity, yes, we can absolutely do that. We can replace the Glendale Art Walk with a mural program temporarily. We did in past meetings discuss that when we did postpone the art walk, it would happen in May of 2020. So I would just need to let those applicants know that it's not going to be happening between January and June of 2021. So I will make sure to do that. In regards to a mural program, I think that's a fantastic idea. But just for full clarity, it takes years to produce a very strong mural program, such as with the city of LA and things like that. So my hesitation in launching something too quickly is that we're not quite prepared. So as Director Schaefer said, I think it's wise to reach out to different municipalities and see the research that they're doing. But I do agree that a mural program is fantastic, but might not be possible within the time.
Okay, because what you're saying is we have to start preparing kind of the locations and how we reach out to the artists and whatnot, because it's not going to be completely like Beyond the Box, but it's, Beyond the Box is a stepping stone to the mural program.
Sure, yeah. And for example, I don't know if Commissioner Yank could comment, but with the city of LA, they have a mural program staff of six or seven people that specifically work just on the mural program. So wanting to make sure we scaffold that correctly and not grow too soon before we're ready.
Okay. Okay, then any word from other commissioners as to what they would like to do with the mural program and the art walk?
Well, I don't know if this is appropriate at this time. I was, I was going to ask for an agenda item during commissioners' comments specifically on discussing the development of a mural guideline based on some existing guidelines and begin the written framework of how a mural program will work in Glendale. Even though Beyond the Box showcases the talents of a number of great muralists, the format of Beyond the Box is very small and we have to look at other things too, including the business community and buildings and the long-awaited identification by public works of public facilities and places and things that can, you know, undergo an artification process. And that was something that was on the original 2019 work plan that I don't think we've accomplished yet to really drill into where in the city and what components of public, public works are available for art and muraling. But we definitely need that procedure too. And I think
As you outline, it's very complex and many moving parts.
Pardon?
As you outline, it's very complex and many moving parts.
So, so good to start looking at it, I guess, and, you know, try to begin to draft things and, you know, we won't come up with a good working system for a while, but the sooner we get at it, the better off we'll be.
So let's definitely bring that back up in a few minutes during commission comments, or I can agendize it as the chair. For now, let's finish up the work plan. So where do we stand on changing things up? Do we want to keep it as is? Do we want to take the art walk off? Do we want to add a mural program? Yes, we need definitely a mural ordinance update as to what's going on in the guidelines. But did we want to allocate any funds just in case?
I might suggest that we allocate those art walk funds or additional funds for mural program development, you know, and that might just, that could mean a number of different things over the next six months. But it could be gathering focus groups or, you know, research consultant, research assistant, something like that.
I like that. Is that possible, Director Schaefer, to kind of hire somebody on to do that?
It wouldn't be city staff, but we could definitely, you know, outside consultant or, yes, we can look to that.
Specifically just to work on real programs?
Yeah, it's just, it's a brand new idea, so let's, we'll look into it over the next few weeks, but I don't see a reason why we couldn't look at that. And I think the way Commissioner Yank is phrasing it gives us a lot of latitude.
Yeah, I like that. I like that a lot. So I would second that as well, if anyone has any other comments or changes.
Do we, do we need to get a group of us together to work on the mural program?
I think we can discuss that where the retreat is, as we said, you know, we're again stealing Jennifer's thunder, and she's looking at January, that's a group of us together to start talking about that.
So definitely, let's then get it on here so that we can discuss it at the progress update retreat, so that it's one of the things that we discuss for the next six months. So I love Commissioner Yank's idea, let's call it a mural program development, let's, I guess, just use the exact same $97,000 just to not complicate things, even if we're not going to use it, it's just an allocation. We can discuss it further at our retreat on the work plan and kind of figure out the details and what we'd like to do moving forward. If everyone's okay with that, then we can go ahead and I guess no other changes to this and we can go ahead. Do we have to make them?
No.
There's nothing, it's just a discussion item. Okay. Any other comments or changes? If not, we're going to go ahead and move forward.
I agree with Commissioner Yank.
Okay, beautiful, then we can go ahead and move forward.
Okay, I don't have to mention it, but as Director Schaefer mentioned, we are planning a retreat, which would include the last project sometime in January. I apologize, we don't have an exact date yet, but as soon as we do, we'll make sure to invite all the commissioners. More than likely, it will be via WebEx or an online platform due to the situation with COVID-19, and we'll make sure to let you know as soon as that's scheduled.
And we'll check their availability as we schedule that.
Yes, perfect. Okay. Seven, commission staff comments, agenda item seven. Okay, Vice Chair Tu Fankyan?
Regarding tonight's talk for the Armenian, for Arzach, is that going to be recorded? Can we watch it at a later date or is it just Libra?
It will be recorded. We can send you a link after. If you register for it now on our website, eaglendellac.org, they'll send you a link to watch later.
Very nice, thank you.
Does that mean we can post all the recordings from these events on our website as well?
We post them on the library's website, but that's a very good point that we should at the very least link the Be the Change. This actually doesn't fall under the Be the Change series, but the Be the Change series, given that that is funded by the Arts and Culture Commission, should at the very least be linked on the Arts and Culture website, if not housed and living on that.
Agreed, because it is a commission-sponsored event, correct? It's not just the library, right?
The one tonight is not the Be the Change series, but the others.
So is Be the Change on our website currently?
Not currently, no, I have to update it. I will make sure to do that.
Okay. Sorry, I cut off Commissioner, Vice Chair Tu Fankyan. Did you have any other comments?
Yes, one last comment, just that Jennifer, thank you so much for all you do for us, and I'm so excited that you're full-time and it's great. We're going to do some great things in Glendale.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Vire?
I just want to say that I've really had a really nice time, good visits with the Beyond the Box artists and their crews and am enjoying looking at all their great artwork, Up and Down Brand. I was especially surprised when I spoke with Maranous Devudi, who did the box at Brand in Monterey, because I, when I asked her where she studied art, I found out that she hasn't studied art at all, that she's an engineer, and I thought that was a really interesting sort of mixed morality and brain-wise. And anyway, I just wanted to say that that was a real pleasure and thank you, Jennifer, for kind of sorting that out for us and giving us a plan for making those visits. And yes, and I'm glad you're on full-time. That's all, thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Vidor?
Okay, yes, Jennifer, congratulations, wonderful, you're full-time. And it was a fun and inspiring weekend to make the rounds on the Beyond the Box painters, so thank you all for that. I have two comments, one I'd like, I already mentioned, and I think that's now included in the retreat, to agendize how we're going to develop guidelines and processes for murals. And I also think that we need a guideline to kind of, not in too much detail, but to outline how approval processes work. We know that we have three departments, the Parks Department, the Planning Department, specifically those concerned with historic buildings and public works who sometimes have to weigh in on what we're doing. And we want to make sure that we have all their general requirements summarized and that we know how to make the rounds of those in a system day when we have to. So that could be a fairly general guidance document and maybe, maybe we could work on that in the near future so that we don't have to reinvent the wheel every time we do, we do a public art project. The second one is, I was intrigued by the poet laureate thing that the woman, Ms. Ravenswood, brought up. And, you know, I wondered if it was something that Library Arts and Culture would consider. Jennifer, I sent you something I found on the internet about poet laureates in California and all the different cities and towns that have them. So I just wanted to, you know, make sure that her suggestion at least got consideration, whether it's a good idea or not, or even fundable, I don't know, but, but it was interesting. So those are my three comments.
Thank you. Commissioner Yank?
I again also wanted to offer congratulations to Jennifer. I was so thrilled when I heard the news and thank you to Director Schaefer for advocating for that full-time position within the city. It's really fantastic that that was able to happen. I also, and just, I just wanted to say that I'm looking forward to having more of the kinds of discussions that we just touched on today. So I'm really looking forward to the retreat, to kind of digging in to everyone's artistic references, you know, values around public art in the city. I'm getting excited just thinking about it, so thank you.
Thank you. Did any of the staff want any comments? I always skip over you guys and I apologize for that. Jennifer or Director Schaefer, Mike Grant?
I'll just say thank you very much, Chair Zidorn. Thank you to the commissioners, you know, we realize this is a, you know, this is you giving your time and volunteering and we really appreciate your service. We can't do it without you. So, so thank you all for the work that you do and the contributions you make and the showing up for the meetings and going out to see artists and, you know, we just appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, yeah, I, thank you, thank you for your congratulations. I'm incredibly excited to move forward in this position and first of all, thank you, Director Schaefer, for advocating for this position. It was an incredible feat and I know that it was, it is definitely a long time coming and I'm incredibly excited and honored to be in this position. So thank you for advocating for this position and moving forward with the vision of the city and making it an arts and cultural destination is incredibly exciting. So thank you for the opportunity to serve in this role. I also wanted to also thank Yvonne Martinez, who's on our staff. She did a, Yeoman's a fantastic, fantastic job in managing the Beyond the Box program. She met with all the artists and did all the paperwork and followed up with artists and did an incredible job in working to manage that program, so wanted to also acknowledge her as well.
Thank you. I will go ahead and finish off and thank and congratulate one more time Jennifer. Obviously, we all said it separately, sent you personal messages, but again, it's been amazing having you on and I'm so excited to have you full-time because now we can just hound you more. I'm kidding, we're not going to actually do that, but thank you because you put a lot of hours into this and to finally be able to be full-time is a big deal. So thank you. I did want to, of course, second the agenda item that Commissioner Vidor wanted to have on the next agenda and please go ahead and do that. I'm going to end today's commission meeting in remembrance of Naidi Sevan Garibian. She was actually one of our Beyond the Box artists and unfortunately, she passed about two weeks ago and her box happened to be one of the ones on Brand that was covered also three weeks ago. So unfortunately, her box is no longer there to view. It was on Brand and I just wanted to, you know, just let everyone know that it was a beautiful piece and her family is, loved it and they would go there to see it in her art and she's And she's remembered and she is loved. And so I wanted to end our commission meeting on that note and remember Ms. Naidi Sevan Hadi Bion and her Beyond the Box and her dedication to art in Glendale. I thank you all very much and I look forward to seeing you all at our next meeting next month. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, we still have communications. Do we have any communications?
We don't, but you can officially adjourn in her name, absolutely.
Thank you.